And that you are present. Reverend Hines?
Present.
Please state your name.
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Lawson?
Mr. Woodman?
Mr. Woodman, present.
Leonard Wiggins, present in the chambers. All nine, we have the third. Go ahead and see if we can call them out.
Their number's not shown on the phone. They had a call.
They have it on call then. Mr. Webb, I'm calling the row. Would you state your name and that you are present on the phone?
Yes, sir. Ralph Webb, present.
Thank you for responding.
Did you hear me?
Ms. Powell, please state your name and that you are from.
Evelyn Powell, present.
Thank you. Ms. Harris is not calling yet. So we'll check her in when she comes in. If there is, we'll take instructions.
Mr. Webb, Mr. Johnson, read our special instructions.
Good evening, everyone. I want to give the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where you're at. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, I ask that everyone exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right. Then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by exit sign. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross the street through either of our parking lots to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide help, direction, and assistance. On a day or morning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway where we will remain until it takes place. In the event of an active shooter in the building, we will run. If there is an accessible escape path, try to evacuate the premises. Hide. If you cannot evacuate, find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found. Lock any doors that you can. Fight. As a last resort, and only if your life is in imminent danger, our staff will provide assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Reverend Hines, would you please offer a prayer?
We thank you for today. We are blessed with living experiences as part of this Corona virus, and we ask your protection. We ask your guidance as we share this meeting, make the things we do in faith and be able to make our county a better place in this crazy life I live.
You have received the minutes and your package of this is a correction. Would you like us to approve?
I can do it.
All in favor, let it be known by the votes on side aye. Please state your name.
Aye. Evelyn Powell.
Aye. Ralph Webb.
Aye. Donald Ball.
Aye. Leonard Wiggins. All opposed, here in ninety minutes off room. At this time, we will convene the reg-- we will recess the reg of the commissions meeting and convene a board of equalization and review. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion is second by Reverend Hines. Second, all in favor, let it be known by the votes on side aye. Please state your name and how you vote. Ms. Powell?
Aye. Evelyn Powell.
Webb?
Aye. Ralph Webb.
Mr. Woodman?
Aye. Billy Wood.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Reverend Hines?
Aye.
Leonard Wiggins, both of you.
And Ms. Harris was on the air.
Ms. Harris, please state your name and that you are present. Ms. Harris, do you hear me?
I hear you. Do you not hear me?
I hear you now. Please state your name and that you are present.
Paula Harris, present.
Okay, thank you. We will now convene Ms. Harris and as the Board of Equalization and Review. Mr. Peters?
Yes, sir. First, do permit us to administer the oath to the four commissioners who are present here today. Ms. Powell, I mean, Ms. Harris was ministered the oath earlier today, and Mr. Webb and Ms. Powell will be a later date as they are physically present.
Can I expect them to be physically present at our school board meetings? The other two that I'm expecting to come to the school board meeting so we can do anything.
Yes, sir. So commissioners here today, there should be a Bible at your seat. You should have a copy of the oath from the official administrator. Will you please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right? Do you solemnly affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Edgecombe County, North Carolina, and that you will not allow your actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations that are like that.
I agree.
If you each, if your name's not written in, if you print your name and then sign or it says signature.
And while you're doing that, I'm going to ask this third person, which is our tax administrator, and she will give us some instruction on what the process or the next steps will be.
Good evening.
Good.
Um, so what we're going to do now is we have been sent a notice of decision letters that needs to action for both a regular appeal for the Board of Equalization and Review and a discovery decision. So you should have, I'll give each of those either practice and we will need to take action and accept that medical decision.
That's two separate actions?
Yes, sir.
Those of you that are on the line, do you have the copies of those?
Yes.
It's a notice of decision and a notice?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the notice of decision?
I move. Billy Wood.
Thank you. Donald Ball.
All in favor, let it be known by the votes on side aye. Ms. Powell, please state your name and how you vote.
Evelyn Powell. Aye.
Mr. Webb, please state your name and how you vote.
Ralph Webb. Aye.
Harris, please state your name and how you vote.
Paula Harris. Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Billy Wood. Aye. I don't know if the two of them are scoring in.
I was going to say, I don't think.
Right, I would agree. I would agree. Okay.
Got it.
Donald Ball.
Oh.
Leonard Wiggins.
Leonard Wiggins, aye. Moving on. Notice of decision regarding discovery building. Would you like us to approve? Second, two seconds. All in favor, let it be known by the votes on side aye. Mr. Wood?
Billy Wood. Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Donald Ball.
Leonard Wiggins, aye. Reverend Hines?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on.
Um, the next action is to use our date, um, for your mandate next day, which will be our term of date. And what this means is we will physically now take Board of Equalization and Review applications for this advertised date of next year. Um, if you are going to convene a, in a, or a meeting, um, and basically adjourn so we can stop taking appeals for this next year. We have worked currently only eight in the more appeals process. It's going to go that it comes as appeals to the Board of Equalization and Review. So if we receive something before May 12th, those happen to, um, can't turn on the tax system. We did receive one Board of Equalization and Review appeal today from Ms. Martha Johnson, which was the lady that was at their last public meeting that we had. She was asked to put it up for the reasons. So if you have that, once we convene, uh, convene a dinner dinner, then we will set up a private, um, one date for just whoever has appeals to take care of those appeals after our term of date, one of the two.
Is the date that you were saying that that's your Saturday?
It is. We're required to, um, hold it open and open it before the first Monday and close it before the first Monday.
And the action that we need is a closing date?
No, sir. Just to close the meeting until the next day.
Is anything else to come, Mr. Wood?
Your meeting of the Board of Equalization and Review until, uh, the May twentieth. I think the word session would be May twentieth, twenty eighth.
Can I hear that, Mr. Wood?
Motion, so move. Billy Wood.
Second. Donald Ball.
Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes on side Reverend Hines?
Aye.
Leonard Wiggins, all again.
Billy Wood. Yes.
Donald Ball.
We are now sitting as the Board of Commissioners. At this time, we have some of the tissues. Did you say we do have some that came in?
Yes, sir. And just to remind everyone, because of our current situation where the meeting is not open to the public, we did publish in our notice that folks will have the opportunity to submit public comments, uh, either in writing submitted, mailed to our office, or by email to a public comment email account that we have set up. We did receive one email, uh, prior to the deadline, which was, uh, yesterday at five o'clock. The comment, the public comment in the form of four questions comes from, uh, Mr. Camilla Stansfield. He has four questions, and if it's okay with you, Mr. Wiggins, as I read each of these questions, I'll respond to each of those questions, if that's okay. So the first question is, is it true that the health department is no longer doing COVID-19 testing and that they are being done at the hospital? Um, well, the response to that is that our health department has not been doing, we have never done COVID-19 testing. Uh, we have only a very limited supply of, uh, test kits. They are reserved, um, for, uh, if there happens to be, uh, cases at one of our, uh, long-term, long-term care facilities or nursing homes. And so all of the cases that are being done in Edgecombe County or for Edgecombe County residents have been from the beginning done by private providers. We have not done any testing. Uh, that was just the response to that first question. Second question is, why have the Edgecombe County Health Department stopped updating their website as it relates to the latest up on the coronavirus? The health department is no longer doing the testing, and they have a problem with the latest update. They need to remove the old information off their page. Um, and it's not that we or the health department have stopped doing updates. Um, the updates on our website, we post that information, uh, pretty much daily, both on our Facebook page and our website. It's much easier, much quicker to get that on our Facebook page. I mean, we can do that from our cell phone, walking across the parking lot. Um, but it's a little bit more involved to do that update on the website. So sometimes there's a little bit of a lag on our website, but we do try to keep that updated as regularly as possible. And we do have that at two places on our website. We have it both on the health department page of our website, and we also have it on a newly created COVID-19 page that the county has. So sometimes there has been a little bit of a lag in updating that number, particularly over the weekend. Um, but for the quickest update, um, folks can find that on Facebook. Third question is, why is the COVID-19 information on the county, excuse me, county website and the health department website not included that per zip code, and why don't you start including it? I found the information on NCDHHS website on Saturday, and it was kind of difficult to find. This information should be included where the county information is reported, along with the other information that is already being shared. And as we've had some discussion before, we've spent some time somewhat laboring over what we felt like we could, uh, what information we could share and what we could not share. Uh, the county is under two laws, actually, that dictates the kind of information that we have to keep private, and that's both federal law HIPAA, as most folks know it, as well as a state, um, law regarding, uh, communicable disease. Um, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services actually is not under the umbrella of the federal HIPAA law. So they can, they have a little bit more flexibility in what they can share. However, that information is per zip code available on the state North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website. And one thing we have not done, we can do, is that we can put a link on our website to direct to the state website.
Uh, Mr. Peters, you satisfied that we have?
And number four, I hope Edgecombe County will take in consideration the COVID-19 status of what is going on in Edgecombe County when it comes to the reopen. Please do not rush to reopen if the status of the county shows you should not do so. Um, and I totally understand that as a concern, uh, just as in particular for any of the public who may be listening in on the call. The only action that the county has taken, well, not the only, but the action that the county has taken is, uh, Commissioner Wiggins signed a state of emergency a little over two months ago now. And there are a number of provisions that are offered to counties when a state of emergency is enacted. The only thing at this point that we are using that state of emergency to do is, um, is, uh, we have closed all of the county buildings with a very few exceptions, um, to the public so that we can protect both the public as well as, uh, our staff. Um, I, I believe the reopening or the stay-at-home order that he may be referring to is, um, under the governor's executive order, as that covers the entire state. So if, uh, stores and restaurants and those kinds of things were to reopen, it would be, um, at the direction of, uh, of the governor. But again, I, I certainly do agree that any of those decisions should be made with, um, with great caution. And, and those are the four questions, and that's the only public comment that we've received.
Any comments from the commissioners on the phone or any in the chamber? Uh, anyone business, um, he's disconnected.
Harris asked if we could turn. There, says she couldn't hear as well.
Can you hear us now, Ms. Harris?
Yeah, that's better.
Can you hear us better?
Yeah.
We, we still don't have Mr. Webb back. He's got a callback, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. Other business consideration of approval of, of budget amendments, anything we brought to our consideration?
Yes, sir, Mr. Wiggins. Just a couple of things I want to point out. Um, if you look at the top right corner, you'll see they are numbered, number two, uh, in the packet. I, I do want to point out, uh, you will see it says to appropriate funds for additional appropriations for fiscal year FY twenty, and this is for, um, our funding to the Edgecombe County Rescue Squad. You will remember that back at your retreat, uh, they made a request, a request for six hundred thousand dollars because of additional expenses and budget shortfall. Um, you approved at that time an additional appropriation of three hundred thousand dollars. I've since met with, uh, uh, met with them and see that there's additional funding that is needed. And so my recommendation would be to allocate an additional three hundred thousand dollars to the rescue squad, so you, that you have that, um, by way of a budget amendment. Uh, the second one that I will point, will.
Mr. Webb, you with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, the second that I will point out would be, uh, number five in your packet. Uh, just want to point out that, um, this budget amendment is to appropriate funding, um, that was received through the health department for the COVID-19 crisis funding. Uh, there were some funds early on that came from the state to help with, uh, help local health departments in responding, uh, to the pandemic. And so you'll, uh, almost seventy-five thousand dollars received, and it is being used to supplement the cost of salaries and some other things. Um, and I'll give you, I'll talk a little bit more about other funding that's perhaps on the way later in, in my update. Um, I'm happy to answer questions on any of the other ones. Those are the two that I wanted to point out.
You have a motion to approve?
I just got a question.
Go right ahead.
I just, um, I just want to know, from my own information, I tell you, for school has increased every college, I just was curious if there's power that can get up.
Which, which? Actually, one of them actually.
I'm Mr. Ball, will you speak up? How, how do you speak in the mic? If you can hear.
Speaking for the Board of Elections, Mr. School, just from my own information, I thought everything was going up, and I'm sure there's a reason for it, but I'm just curious.
Right, and it, and it was because of, you know, whenever there's an election, the local Board of Elections has to make decisions about, um, how many voting sites will be open, how many hours will be for each one. Uh, you know, that's made within some limits that are set by the state, and because of the, the date or the locations and the times that the Board of Elections chose to have, um, it increased the cost for that. So a, as you'll see, he, he's, uh, uh, funds to, uh, to be able to cover those costs.
You know this?
I have a question, number two, associated with the Rescue Squad. So at our retreat, we authorized three hundred more thousand dollars. That took our budget to one point five. Originally, it's one point two.
Yes.
And now we're the second three hundred thousand. That's six hundred thousand dollars. Definitely, definitely take care of what they need during the same year.
Yes, and, and so it will take.
You said, you said yes.
Based on what they have shared with me, uh, thank you.
Yes, before, okay.
Yeah, I should qualify that. Well, they told us at the meeting, they felt like they needed six hundred to get to the end of the year without having any payables roll over to the next year. And so the decision at the time was to, you know, let's give them enough to get them through the next couple of payrolls, let's have a chance to sit down and think about this, talk about this for a little bit. Based on what they have reported to me, this will get them caught up on receivable or, or payables that they have, um, that have been lingering, and hopefully it will clear all of those doubts so that they will start the next fiscal year, um, off with no carry for doubt. That's what they have reported.
And I, and I do recall our conversation that Mr. Powell, Mr. Lawson, and Mr. Harris that I had, and we were talking about six hundred thousand. And, and based on some of the conversation I've had with, um, Mr. Evans in terms of what we're proposing, how they might change, okay, I've got somewhat satisfied in terms of, uh, the way they plan to restructure some things, which I think with the other board, our board, you know, a little more control, uh, that's what, based on our conversation with Mr. Evans, and maybe we'll discuss that, some of that some later, but I'm satisfied with that especially.
At, at our retreat, we talked about there was large some past due money owed. Has any of that come, uh, started to come in?
Medicaid costs.
Medicaid, four hundred fifty thousand dollars, does not stand.
Not yet. We're closer by the head, sir. And, and just to speak to what Mr. Wiggins mentioned, so one of the concerns that we've had had to do with their board governance is heavily weighted towards, um, people who have a direct, uh, connection to the Rescue Squad, some of them which work for the Rescue Squad. They asked them to consider going back and, um, sizing their board makeup, and, and they had no disagreement with that. The, there's the board, volunteer board at a point. Um, they have a committee that's been reviewing their, um, constitution, including board appointment, and, uh, they're going through the process of that. Right now, um, is, it would, uh, give five appointments from the county and then three from the volunteer board. And that's not the final, what has been voted on, but that's where the draft is standing.
And, and even if that it comes to us, that we have to be, I can be more satisfied because that thought makes really hours, and I think it will, it is, it's really, uh, uh, it's really our Rescue Squad, and that, because it makes it a bunch of difference.
But should we, uh, if we would receive any of this past due money between now and this fiscal year, if we could pull back, fall back?
We could, absolutely, but there's also.
But the money comes to us anyway, doesn't it?
It does come to us, that's right.
It comes to the county. But I'm saying, once we authorize another three hundred thousand into the Rescue Squad, and then you're saying, are, are we obligated by law to make sure that money we receive possibly past due goes straight to the Rescue Squad or could we jump them?
There's no obligation. It's, it's supposed to support the county and our cause to provide a rescue squad.
Yeah, if, if it's a, we just advanced it that way.
It does.
I agree.
Hey, anybody on the phone?
That's what I thought, too. We would just advance it.
No, would you say that's okay?
Well, but to some degree, we also need to keep in mind that their capital purchase that we have been putting off, and, you know, namely Rescue Squad, the trucks themselves, they've got trucks that have got lots of miles, over two hundred thousand miles on them, and we've been kind of kicking that can down the road. So once that money comes in, we do need to use some of that to replace, uh, start down the path of replacing those trucks.
Well, I think what's been our problem is that, that, that we've had a control or not it, okay? And if we get, if the board changes, at least we will have the appointments of, or in terms of so, I think we have much to say so after the house. How do you feel about it?
Well, I'm, I think we, we all knew that this was coming, and this has been ongoing for years. So we're hoping to start at ground zero for the next fiscal year, is what it falls down to, and it took that thick of a power call to get there. We're going to control the Medicaid fund in the future that we hope to use for capital outlets like the Rescue Squad to support nature. Just have to fund a little higher than what we've been funded to provide the same shelter in about twenty twenty.
Well, I think we can fund a little higher if we just know how to fund it.
I have a question.
Go right ahead, Ms. Harris.
Do we have a timetable for them to make that decision about the board changes, or we're just going to wait until they decide?
Well, I was going to say, we've asked them to have that done by the first of fiscal year. Um, their committee has worked on, I think they're meeting again soon to review a final draft. Then they have to put it out for thirty days for the full board to, uh, to review it, um, before they take a vote.
Okay.
But to have it in place by the beginning of the fiscal year, that can happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Leonard, right? We didn't get a motion, did we?
I got one more question, given my information. I called courthouse, administration, electricity.
Which budget amendment?
Uh, number six. It just says electricity, electricity, natural gas, maintenance, administration.
Yeah, so we're actually, uh, three of those lines, electricity, courthouse, admin, and natural gas administration building, um, in this budget amendment, he is decreasing those lines.
Right. I didn't say that. What I wanted to know, what was it called, shortening? Is it where we've been remodeling the lighting like that?
No, it's, it's, it's just for the, the, the light bill for courthouse and the admin building and, um, the natural gas and have not used, he's not needed as much as.
Okay, very good. I don't think it's been a lot of money about this one, that's your question.
Oh, it's for sure, yeah, but this, this is our normal operation, but, yeah, good question.
You have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Billy Wood, second.
All in favor, let it be known by the votes on side aye, Reverend Hines?
Aye.
Leonard Wiggins, aye. Mr. Lawson?
Donald Ball. Aye.
Woodman, aye.
Ms. Powell?
Powell, aye.
Mr. Webb?
Webb, aye.
Ms. Harris?
Paula Harris, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to a consideration of through agreement with the Down East Consortium. Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Wiggins, this is, uh, the joint corporate agreement for participation in Down East Home Consortium, or DEH, DEH, period running from July this year through June of twenty twenty-three. As you'll recall, Edgecombe County is able to receive federal home fund by being a part of the DEHC. Home funds provide for housing and community development activities for low-income families. Typically, these funds we receive are used for housing rehabilitation projects. We, we participate along with the city of Rock Mountain, who serves as the lead entity, and several other municipalities in the Twin Counties region. Allocations vary from year to year depending on federal, but typically around one hundred thousand dollars per year available for projects in our county. I recommend that you approve the agreement as presented.
Motion to approve? Yeah, moves.
Second.
Question? All in favor, let it be known by the votes on side aye, Reverend Hines?
Aye.
Leonard Wiggins, aye.
Donald Ball. Aye.
Woodman, aye.
Ms. Powell?
Powell, aye. Paula Harris, aye.
Ms. Harris?
You were asked for your aye.
Thank you. Moving on to consideration of local water supply.
Now, we are required to submit an annual water supply plan to the North Carolina Division of Water Resources. This plan provides a general description of the systems, the supply sources, and how it is operated. Until recently, it was not required that these plans be approved by the Board of Commissioners. However, we recently received correspondence that the board does need to retroactively adopt. adopt the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen plan. Being that District Six or Princeville is not currently interconnected to the rest of the water system, there are separate plans for it included. I recommend that you approve the enclosed resolution as presented.
Is, is, is there one motion to approve?
You can do it one motion.
Is your motion approved?
Paula Harris, I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second, Paul, Paul.
Questions? All in favor, that'd be known by the votes, sign aye, right hand.
Aye.
Then, Wiggins, aye.
Paul, Oswald, aye.
Whiting, aye.
Ms. Harris?
Uh, Paula Harris, aye.
Paula, aye. Yeah, aye.
Ralph, Webb, aye.
Did we get all aye? Okay.
And just to let you know that the twenty twenty plan has been submitted to the state and currently under review. Once they review it, they will send it back and we'll bring that to you for more.
You have in your, uh, package also agreement with North Carolina Division of Water, because we have studies, that's an annual, uh, agreement that we do, that, just based on your view of it in your package, is there a motion to approve? Does she have next a motion? Give a second.
Second, Paul, Paul.
Any questions? All in favor, that'd be known by the votes, sign aye, right hand.
Aye.
Then, Wiggins, aye.
Paul, Oswald, aye.
Whiting, aye.
Ms. Harris?
Paula Harris, aye.
Paul?
Paul, aye.
Ralph, Webb, aye.
Thank you. Consideration of approval of JPC funding plan for fiscal year, uh, go ahead, uh, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we, um, a- as you know, we, we get funding to do this every year, and this is, uh, for programs to serve, uh, court-involved or at-risk youth. Uh, this year, the funding amount actually increased some because of the raised-age expansion. Uh, we have been receiving the same amount for, I don't know, as long as I've been on that, that committee, which is, I don't know, it's been a long time. And so, um, it now is, uh, two hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. The JCPC board has met and recommends six programs that are listed there in your agenda packet, and it does include or require a local match, which would be twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars, which will be, uh, included in our budget for FY twenty-one, and so, recommendation to approve.
Question?
Question.
Can you tell me what the increase was? You said it's an increase this year.
Mm-hmm, it, um, it usually, uh, it is usually two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I believe it is, and it went up just a little bit.
Got a question?
Go ahead.
Uh, Eric, what is Hometown Hire that the Peacemakers have?
Uh, it is a, uh, job training, uh, on-the-job training type of program that the Peacemakers, uh, has been running now for a couple of years.
Is it anywhere in Edgewood County? Because I've never heard of it.
Uh, they, it, they are located in Rock Mountain, so they serve, uh, they serve youth for both Edgewood and Nash Counties. Uh, they can only, they can only get our funding when they serve in Edgewood County residents. They also get funding from Nash County as well. Uh, and, and by the way, a number of these programs are funded by, by multiple counties. A lot of them get funding from both us and Nash County, sometimes other counties like Will's County. But they have to use that money to serve, uh, youth in that particular county.
So, anyway, you can give me any numbers of how many Edgewood County citizens they're serving on both of those Freedom School and Hometown Hire?
Or I can give you what they served, uh, the last program in there, yes, ma'am?
Okay, thank you.
Good work.
And, and you know, I think, leaving my comments, it was, the first, I don't see on this list what I could, uh, base program, okay? So, I think we need to, to look at, uh, through the JPCP board in terms of how this is done, and expect, but even how it is advertised, or how we get people involved, because I don't see it. And also went through, um, we need to go, we need to go back to the, the board.
I call, yeah.
And then, it's the momentum, okay?
Okay.
To satisfy the requirements, so, let's make sure that that is around the rest, even from a county commissioner, get it out, Mr. Harold.
Aye.
Should we have, uh, does not, in turn, so, it, this board, it needs to be updated.
Yes, sir.
And it needs to be updated, and, and we need to look, we just go into the, who's representing, okay, so we can look at it as a question. This is money that I think we need to look at, uh, uh, how, if possible, are there any county-based organizations that might need to get consideration that have thought many of that kind of considers?
Sure, absolutely. And one of the things about the, this board, it is fairly flexible as far as the appointments and the number of appointments. You'll see that there are certain slots that need to be-
I, I saw that.
But there are also the opportunity for, uh, at-large appointee, so if you know someone, we're always looking for good, um, board members, if you know someone who'd be interested, uh, in serving, we certainly would love to-
And, and you know, it's, 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 it's just the funding that I think we need to look at, and, and not saying that these people are not doing us a good service, but if we've got county-based organizations that we need to look at, that probably have not been considered because they have no knowledge of, okay? Make sure that the organization that it might could qualify for.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to serve the county commissioner representative.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris.
Are there any other, I didn't get a motion on it. Is there a motion to approve?
I don't know. Not a lot.
Second, right hand, um, all in question, and what's, all in favor, that'd be known by the votes, sign aye, right hand.
Aye.
Then, Wiggins, yes?
Aye, Donald, Paul.
Whiting, yes.
Um, Mr. Webb?
Aye, Ralph, Webb.
Ms. Powell?
Aye, Powell.
Ms. Harris?
Aye, Paula Harris.
Consider approval of, does this recognize the North Carolina Conference, and that's the understanding, Mr. Whiting, you brought that to our attention, and you want to speak on it?
I had a, uh, a, an active citizen of our county, Dr. David Anderson, who called him, who's been working with the street for the last three and a half years, and recommended that, um, he brought our attention that we consider a resolution for all the hard work that this group has done since, uh, the hurricane in October of that year. And, uh, so I spoke to Mr. Evans, and he's put it together for our consideration.
Can you get him on the phone? I definitely don't know.
Right, so we have, we have two people, um, with the, uh, North Carolina Conference of United Methodist Church who are planning to call in, and I'm hoping they may be, may be on the call now. Um, yes, uh, I wrote them all. Um, um, Jason Duval, who is the, who was the manager of the Mission Center, as they call it here, as you know, that, um, uh, almost three years ago now, you agreed to allow them to basically lease that building at no cost. They have been maintaining, upkeeping the building. Uh, we have been covering the cost of utilities throughout the last year, they have started to help to share in the cost of the utilities, and doing a lot of good things there. Jason Duval has done a great job in managing that. Also, Al Miller, who is the state, there, the, uh, North Carolina Conference of United Methodist Church, they're director of Disaster Ministries, I believe, may be on the, um, and we're just grateful for all the work that they have done. Um, uh, I've had the opportunity to meet many of the volunteers that, uh, have come in, and not only have they been from other states, they've been in here from other countries. And so, it's, it's just been a wonderful thing, and I appreciate you all, thanks for bringing it to our attention, and, and thank you all for considering, uh, this resolution tonight.
Okay.
But I haven't called it, but it's-
Okay, so, uh, what's, who would you read the resolution?
I'd be happy to. Resolution of appreciation for the North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church. Whereas on October sixteenth, twenty sixteen, Hurricane Matthew hovered over Edgewood County and coast of eastern North Carolina, brought about devastating flooding, and, whereas hundreds of structures were damaged and thousands of individuals were displaced, many with little to no resources to build back their lives, and, as the North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church came to Edgewood County with a commitment to help families recover. In that effort, they set up the Tarver Mission Center, through which they host volunteers from all over the world, facilitated thousands of hours of labor, of labor, and served a hundred and fifty-three families by rebuilding their homes. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Edgewood County Board of Elections publicly recognizes the efforts of the North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church, especially the staff of the Tarver Mission Center, and hereby extend our heartfelt gratitude for helping our citizens to build back better this fourth day of May in the year of our Lord, twenty twenty.
And, did I get it again? Did I get it, I got it? Will you make your motion?
I made the motion that we consider the adoption of this resolution of appreciation.
Thank you.
I'll say it.
And we just, we just like to, again, on behalf of the board, of the North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church, and, and Jason Duval, who's our local administrator here, and, um, they have done just enough so much, uh, for the lives of our citizens and remit, and, and how many homes are, hundreds?
Hundred fifty-three.
Hundred fifty-three, and, and that's tremendous, and, uh, um, this is just a small way of this county's name. Thank you. All in favor of the gotten the resolution, that'd be known by the votes, sign aye, right hand.
Aye.
Well, Mr.-
Whiting, aye.
Oswald, aye.
Um-
Powell, aye. Paula Harris, aye.
Ralph, Webb, aye, and amen.
And then, Wiggins? Aye. That is approved, makes on our agendas approved, so it's approved of residence to authorize sale of, sir, for seven series handguns, the sheriff's office, go ahead.
Uh, the sheriff's office received a donation to purchase new weapons for his deputy. Sheriff Atkinson is requesting your approval to allow deputies to purchase their current handgun. North Carolina general statute does allow the governing body to dispose of personal property owned by the county, uh, through a negotiated sale. I recommend that the board approves this attached resolution, which will allow Sheriff Atkinson to offer these weapons for sale to his deputies. I do want to point out, um, in the resolution that's in your agenda packet, there's the, the two slight corrections that is on the copy that we'll ask you to sign, Mr. Wiggins, where it says in the first two parts there that he determined that many of the service weapons issued actually was all of the service weapons issued, so he replaced all of the weapons for his deputies through this donation, uh, likewise for that, uh, second part there.
And is there motion to approve it as directed by the deputy?
Sure move.
Whiting, Whiting, second. Interject here, a question, uh, Mr. Evans, I expect you to possibly take-
About possibly what?
And, uh, donated, uh, donated the money to help buy the guns, there was a sales tax charged for those guns, and, uh, it brought our attention that maybe those sales tax dollars that were generated to our county can also be given to the, um, that's a fifteen hundred dollars.
Picking up.
I'm having the same problem.
Yeah, on- once we know what that amount is, we can, uh, we can do that by way of the budget.
Okay, all right.
Any other question? All in favor, that'd be known by the votes, sign aye, Mr. Whiting?
Whiting, aye.
Oswald, aye.
Wiggins, aye.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Webb?
Ralph, Webb, aye.
Evan, Powell, aye.
Paula Harris, aye.
My, my, John. H, press approve amendment to the personnel plan.
In light of the current COVID-nineteen pandemic, I've realized that in order for us to be able to continue to provide our essential services, our employees must report to work and face the risk of doing so. In an effort to minimize those risks, we have closed most of our buildings to the public, and we have a majority of our employees working on a rotating, uh, on rotating schedule. However, there are many of our functions where a rotating schedule is not possible. For these employees, I would like to be able to compensate them in some way. Our personnel policy does not currently have a provision for hazard compensation, therefore, I am requesting that you consider approving the attached policy addendum. As you will see, it gives me three options for compensation with limits. Two of these options involve additional pay, while the third is compensatory leave. I recommend that the board approve the hazard compensation policy. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just add to that, um, if the board chooses to, uh, adopt this tonight and amend our personnel policy, uh, my decision on which of these three options to use will be dependent on whether or not we feel reasonably assured that we can get this reimbursed through some of the funding that's coming from the federal government down through state. Um, based on just a preliminary estimate, it will be a considerable amount of money if we did either option one or two, that is, the flat amount that's given, no more than two pay tiers or a percentage of, of, uh, employee, um, salary over a two-month period. So, i- it would be upwards of somewhere between a hundred and point five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, some, the, as I mentioned earlier, I think the governor did sign into law today the state's budget on how to use one point five billion dollars coming from the federal government. Uh, we just starting to get some guidance for how, uh, that money will make its way down, some of it will make its way down to county, and how in turn we might be able to use it. So, uh, I would like to have this as an option, um, particularly for this, but it could be something that would be necessary, uh, in the future with other counties. Question?
I would ask this thing, um, I've had some conversations with everybody, Mr., uh, and I do support it, because if, if you don't have a policy, if you don't have a personnel policy that will allow what you can get, so we need to be in position to, and it is discretion of all, and I would move, go ahead.
Is there a figure amount that based into it, uh, come?
Uh, we are not certain of what that is.
So, that is discretion of, seventy dollars.
Right, uh, from what I understand, that a, a part of that one point five billion dollars, part of that is going to come directly to the local government. From what I understand, is that is going to be based on population, so every county is not going to get the same amount, but it's going to be based on population. Um, from what I've read, every county is going to get at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I have not seen, um, I have not seen what that's going to be for Edgewood County. Of course, it wouldn't necessarily be just for something like this, it would be for any expenses related to a response, uh, to this pandemic. So, um, it's, it's still not clear as to what our part of that would be and how we could use the past.
Another question?
I would like just going to record things I've reported, and I would get them added to our policy. And I agree a hundred percent with you that only if we get funding from that one point five billion, that we pay extra, we consider compensation.
I don't think that's the way you see it. Is that the way you see it?
Well, I, I said that my decision as to which of the three options would be based on what kind of funding-
Right, right, I, yeah, what I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm saying is, man, I don't think, if you, you locking them in to something, you locking them in to something, you don't think you're paying it, okay?
Well, I, I will say this, if we don't get funds from the state, in order for me to do this, I would have to come back to you all with a budget amendment.
Now, we are true.
I was thinking my stuff, here, I thought we should amend the policy, but we should use comp time, only and only use pay if we receive money.
And, 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 and I've had a conversation with him in terms of, uh, uh, I'm, I'm not exaggerate, but, uh, I think we've got a whole lot of people on the front line, and, but I, I do think that some of these people are comp time people, okay? I do, okay, rather than what we might do as cash folks, so I think, but I would want us to, basically, at least, um, just leave some discretion to him in terms of how he do it, and have that conversation with us, so we can get rid of it. Okay, okay. I'm not trying to leave you locked in here, but he was locking you down, okay?
But to highlight an important point you made, Mr. Wiggins, is that it is likely, if this becomes an eligible use of these funds, without a doubt, it will probably say something to the effect, if your policy says you can do it.
And, and, and we, 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 and, and I, we, we get in the front, in front of the game anyway, okay? okay?
And we, we use funds from recovery of hurricane money to pay for overtime.
Overtime.
When we had, when we had to operate in emergency.
That's right, which that, that's already clearly allowed our personnel policies to do.
And, and, and the, and the overtime could have, we, we probably could have been for something, has the students too, based when we had the hurricane, so I think this goes it all.
Okay.
And I did make a motion that I guess I could.
Sure.
Any other questions? All in favor that it be known by voting side, aye, Republican, aye?
Aye.
Witten, aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Oswald, aye.
Ms. Harris?
Father Harris, aye.
Evelyn Powell, aye.
Ralph Will, aye.
Thank you so much there. Consideration of approval or amendment to grant administrative position, go ahead.
You will recall that you approved the addition of a grant administrator position in two thousand and sixteen, which was filled a short time following. The position later became vacant and I have not yet filled that position though it is still budgeted. But also recall that we have, we have planned to add another position in the finance department. This position will handle a number of things, but primarily the person will track grant projects as well as assist with account reconciliation and serve as a backup to other functions. Being that the duties of the two positions would overlap in many ways, I've determined it would serve us well to combine the two positions by amending the position title and description of the grant administrator. Therefore, I recommend that you approve the amended position as proposed.
I, I apologize about this, but I didn't raise this question. We've got a department head, the Gress, Gresson is that department?
No, sir.
That's not about it, but you've got, who do they report to?
So.
What does, who does that position report to?
Previously were reported, it reported to me. As it's being redone, it will report to the financial.
So you, you move this position to primary?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I had to step out, do we currently have a grant administrator?
No, we do not, no ma'am. We had that position still, she was with us for about eight or nine months, took another job opportunity and we have not filled.
Other questions? All in favor that it be known by voting side, aye, Republican, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Oswald, aye.
General Wiggins, aye. Ms. Harris?
Father Harris, aye.
Evelyn Powell, aye.
Ralph Will, aye.
Thank you so much. Moving on, Department, ABC, that's where I'm at, Mr. Calvin Wiggins has recommended to fill the vacancy. I recommend that Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Wiggins is not irrelatable. Before you ask that question, okay, and, uh, Mr. Calvin Wiggins, uh, questions?
Can you tell me anything else about Mr. Wiggins?
Yes, Mr. Wiggins is a Phillips High School graduate. I know as much about him as maybe other county commissioners know about who they recommend and I don't know nothing about who they recommend. Did I say that all right? So yes, he's an outstanding citizen of the county of Rocky Mountain, former Abbot's.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, so I highly recommend.
Father Harris, second.
Thank you, and, and all in favor, uh, let it be known by voting side, aye, Republican, aye?
Witten, aye.
Oswald, aye.
General Wiggins, aye. Ms. Harris?
Father Harris, aye.
Ms. Powell? Is she with us?
I'm sorry, Evelyn Powell, aye.
Ralph Will, Ralph Will, aye.
We also have a recommendation for our needs board, if none of us, Knight is recommended, um, you don't have to ask no question about her, there's enough in there.
Well, I recommended her, I interviewed her and talked with her, I think she's very knowledgeable about it, about the agency and how it functions, so she would be an asset to it.
Do you make, do you make a motion that we approve?
I do.
Second.
Father Harris.
Second, okay, uh, questions?
Um, my only question was, I thought we needed two.
It still went open.
Okay, I, I had, uh, my recommendation was Gwendolyn Knight from Springfield Road of Rocky Mountain.
And then, and then I'm not going to ask you nothing about her, okay?
I'm okay. She's worked with nonprofits for the last fifteen years, Community Rich Organization.
Okay.
Okay.
Name is Gwendolyn Knight, she used to live in Princeville, but she lives in Rocky Mountain Springfield Road, she moved after the flood.
Those physician, uh, Dr. Gwendolyn Morris Knight and Ms. Gwendolyn Knight, uh, you recommend, you nominate Ms. Gwendolyn Knight?
Yes, Father Harris, and they're no relation.
And then questions? All in favor that it be known by voting side, aye, Republican, aye?
Aye.
Witten, aye.
Oswald, aye.
General Wiggins, aye. Ms. Harris?
Powell, aye.
Father Harris, aye.
Ralph Will, aye.
And Mr. Wiggins, I could just point out, so your vote on those two appointees to the need board is a recommendation to the need board and they will do the same.
And we got some problems if they don't.
Uh, and.
It's your will.
We'll pick who we want.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, so the, the planning board did recently have a meeting, uh, you have a, a copy of their minutes from their meeting, uh, there is an item to be of action recommended to you tonight, you'll see that Brandon Deal submitted a request for rezoning approximately thirty thousand square feet along a located forty-two-nine-seven empty highway, empty one-twenty-two south, currently zone agricultural residential, thirty thousand square feet or AR thirty, general industrial district M two, all the thirty thousand square feet of the parcel is currently zoned M two, Mr. Deal is requesting the entire parcel be zoned M two. Uh, this does require a public hearing, so the recommended action is to call for that public. Uh, your Jim.
Uh, is there a motion?
Same move, Paulson.
Second.
Second, Mr. Will, uh, all in favor that it be known by voting side, aye, Republican, aye?
Aye.
Witten, aye.
Oswald, aye.
Wiggins, aye. Mr. Will?
Father Harris, aye.
Harris?
Will, aye.
We got you.
Will, aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
After these lists and releases for review and approval, anything we brought to the board's end?
No, sir, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there motion to approve?
Same move, Paulson.
Questions? All in favor that it be known by voting side, aye, Mr. Wood?
Witten, aye.
Oswald, aye.
Wiggins, aye?
Father Harris, aye.
Ralph Will, Ralph Will, aye.
Thank you, contracts for review and approval, anything we brought to our attention there?
No, sir, you just have one, it's well in the sixty thousand, I will lend it for, so it's for information.
Okay, is there motion to approve?
Approve.
Do you have seconds?
Second.
All in favor that it be known by voting side, aye?
Witten, aye.
Oswald, aye.
Wiggins, aye?
Father Harris, aye.
Powell, aye. Will, aye.
Department reports for review, I'm going to just go down, do you see financial sewer or questions from the board in reference to any of these? I think you need to be bringing, bringing to our attention.
I do want to point out under the water and sewer department report, you can see there's a page that, uh, Mr. Matthews has shown, uh, as you know, starting March thirty-first and the governor's executive order, we cannot, uh, charge, uh, late fee or cutoffs, and so this is a report showing what those fees are, so between late fees and delinquent fees, um, it's total of a little over twenty-nine thousand, I just wanted to be aware of that.
Any questions?
Have a question on that, um, after he listed, will these folks be required to go back and pay their regular bill as well as the late fees that they did not pay before?
Had any late fees already accumulated before March the thirty-first that's still on the bill yet, they will not have to come back and pay any late fees that otherwise would have been charged during this time period.
Okay.
Still there for them. They're not cutting off any serves to that.
Anything we brought to our attention, Mr.?
I'll give you a, um, update regarding COVID-19 pandemic if I could, um, as, you know, I've been trying to, at least on a daily basis, on the county's numbers, um, want to give you somewhat of, uh, some additional information today or tonight. Globally, um, around the world there now, it has, uh, the positive cases exceed three and a half million positive case and there have been, there are now over two hundred and forty-eight thousand deaths as a result of COVID-19 around the world. Uh, as of this morning's report from the state of North Carolina, eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight positive cases in North Carolina and four hundred and thirty deaths. Uh, I want to point out, and this is something I had shared, uh, with you in a previous report, in comparing this COVID-19, uh, virus and resulting death to the seasonal flu, um, at this point, the number of deaths in North Carolina has well exceeded the total number of deaths from seasonal flu as of last flu season, the last flu season being, uh, from September of two thousand eighteen to May of two thousand nineteen, there were two hundred and three deaths. Um, and, uh, as of the first death reported in North Carolina, which was on March the twenty-fifth, as of today, there are four hundred and thirty deaths. So I think it shows, um, the seriousness of what we're facing in this, uh, COVID, uh, coronavirus. Um, as of this morning, Echelon County, we have one hundred and eighteen positive cases, there have been unfortunately five deaths from Echelon County residents from, um, from COVID-19 and thankfully sixty-one people have now recovered. Um, we have, uh, we've asked Caroline Shapell, our health director is doing a great job, she and all of her staff who really, uh, you know, somewhat the tip of the spear of what we do and all of this, you know, her staff is responsible for all communicable disease, including this, and they have to make some very tough decisions, they have to do some difficult work, every positive case they have to make contact with, they have to find out who their contacts are, they have to keep contact with those folks until they get to a place where they are deemed as recovered, uh, so it's a lot of work that they have to do and they've been doing a great job doing, as well as the rest of our staff have been doing a tremendous job in making the adjustments that we've had to make and trying to continue to provide our services and yet protect ourselves as best as we can. But, uh, Ms. Shapell and her staff, uh, recently reviewed some of the data, um, that they maintain regarding the cases, uh, that we have here in the county, um, we have discussed those to see, uh, you know, uh, what things sort of jump out at us that grabbed, um, our attention. So as they reviewed the, the information on positive cases, the following was noted. Um, as it's fairly consistent with data from across the state and the nation, we see that the largest number of positive cases are within the twenty-nine to forty-nine age range, if that is the case for Echelon County and that seems to be the case, um, as well as other places across, across town. Uh, in Echelon County, there are slightly more females that tested positive than males, but only a marginal difference. Uh, of the, of the five deaths in Echelon County, um, three of those are over sixty-five or sixty-five and older and two of, two of those are under sixty-five. Uh, there are at least a dozen cases in the county where there is more than one positive case in the same hall. Um, there are also, as we would probably expect, a larger number of cases inside of the towns within the county than outside of the town. Uh, as of this morning, um, a little over, I think it's seventy-seven percent of the positive cases in Echelon, um, yes, right, seventy-seven percent of the positive cases in Echelon County are African-American. And now, uh, and this was just as of this morning, uh, now there seems to be an emergence of cases from the Hispanic community. Uh, they're, they're doing some research to find a little bit more, the early indicator seems to be as, uh, as, you know, we're coming into the season and the migrant population comes, you know, moves into this area, it seems to be part of the factor perhaps contributing to that, but not all of it. So, uh, how does that information inform us? What does that tell us that we should be doing? So a few of the things that we should and will be doing is, uh, we will continue a strong message to stay at home as much as possible, wash your hands, often clean and sanitize often and distance oneself when around other people. And also, um, we will remind those in the higher risk categories that they need to be particularly mindful to follow those measures I just mentioned. We will stress, uh, we're working on a, an effort now to work with some community partners, uh, to stress that people who are symptomatic or waiting for a test result or know that they are, have tested positive for the coronavirus, that they need to stay at home and they need to distance themselves from family members as much. That's easier said than done for some people, but it's certainly an important message we need to continue to get out there. And finally, uh, we need to sound the alarm regarding the apparently disproportionately higher risk to the African-American community and the emergence of cases in the Hispanic community. We will work with community partners, including other healthcare providers, church leaders and community-based organizations to get a concerted message, um, out through multiple means. So that was some information, it was very important and I wanted to share. Uh, also, as you know, we're still in this modified, uh, uh, status for county operations, what we refer to as level three. Um, we have, as I mentioned earlier, most of our buildings closed to the general public. Um, we now have two hundred and eighty-five staff members who their work schedules have been changed in some way because of this level of operation that we are in, in an effort to try to minimize their exposure. Um, most of that two hundred and eighty-five are working on a rotating schedule, we have a few people working from home, we have a few others that are using the emergency leave or the extended family medical leave, uh, to be at home to care for their children that are out of school. Uh, we will continue this level three operations through, uh, this Friday, May eighth, and then we will reevaluate and determine if we need to make any changes at that time. Uh, part of that will be determined on the data that we have, it'll also be determined on, um, what decision the governor makes with his executive force. We are already starting to think about and plan for what we're calling our transition plan for county operations. Uh, at some point, hopefully we'll be able to get back to doing what we used to do, nobody can really tell how long it's going to take, um, but we do need to start thinking about how we will transition back, uh, towards that. Uh, again, it will be, it's uncertain how long we'll be in level three operations. Um, um, we, one thing, the things that we, we will, we do expect is that it will be a phased transition, we don't expect it just, everybody go back to doing exactly what they're doing, open the doors and business as usual, it'd be some type of phased transition. Uh, we will be doing social distancing in some form, will likely become part of our new norms, to borrow a very popular phrase these days, and the data will dictate the ways and the pace in which we transition. Uh, right now, we are weighing out cost effective modifications that we can do in offices to better distance ourselves from clients and clients from each other. Uh, our goal is to implement as many of these measures, uh, as we can before we reopen our buildings. Also, finally, the final note I'll mention is we do have a, a page on our website dedicated to COVID-19 and lots of information and helpful resources, uh, for both individuals and businesses that we would encourage people to make. And, and that's my other thing.
Any questions?
A few.
Go ahead.
Um, not about, well, not your report that you just gave, but something that we discussed before that you may have been looking into for. Uh, I've been getting a lot of calls to find out, have we gone any further with the company that came to talk about internet? We had any follow-up?
Oh, they, um,
Uh, I've been getting a lot of calls to find out, have we gone any further with the company that came to talk about internet? We had any follow-up?
Oh, they, um, they had, I think they wrapped up their survey, and I believe they submitted their application to the state. I have not heard, um, whether they have heard anything on their application, but I certainly will follow up some more with them.
Okay. All right. How about a update about the courthouse?
On the work that's being done at the courthouse?
Right.
Okay. So, um, as you know, we basically had, um, two different, but interconnected projects going on. One project, the larger project, was, um, the contract, uh, to do the repair work that resulted from the mold remediation in the larger part of the, um, the basement in the courthouse. That is underway. One key milestone that we're working towards, and, and it looks like we're gonna be able to meet that, is, um, we need for that contractor to be able to rewrap those pipes in the basement so that we can turn the air conditioning on in that building. Uh, he has given us, uh, a target date of May eleventh, and it looks like he's gonna meet that. We've been blessed to have some relatively cool days, uh, in the last few weeks. Uh, but that seems to be moving along. Also, uh, you approved a contract amendment for the mold mitigation in that mechanical room. That mold mitigation has been done. I just got the clearance report back from it today. I, I did read the headline that it said it did clear. I didn't get a chance yet to read through the details of it. But the mold remediation has been done in the mechanical room. So that, that work in the larger part of the basement will be ongoing for probably another month or so.
My last question. Can you tell me where we are with Princeville?
In regards to their recovery?
Right.
Okay, so, um, for the fifty-three acre project, uh, we have under contract, uh, SNME engineers. They have completed their initial, um, site plan for the project which was approved by the town board. They recently completed the cost estimate for the infrastructure on the entire site as well as the, um, um, as the cost benefit analysis on mitigation on the fifty-three acres. They're about to move into the next phase of that, which will be, uh, to design, do the architectural design for the two buildings that are to be built, that we have funding for, that fire station, as well as the, um, the town, uh, public works building.
Uh-huh.
We have a contract underway with wood engineers that's doing the elevation project, and that's elevation for both the county's fifteen properties as well as the town, uh, Princeville's fifteen properties. Um, they are in the process now of contacting the homeowners. They have to go to every structure and to do an engineering assessment to determine whether or not that home can be elevated at what estimated cost. If it can't, can there be repairs done so that it can? If not, they ha- they will make a recommendation that the house be torn down before and rebuilt before it's elevated. So that's ongoing now. We have, uh, completed the county's, uh, buyout program, and all the properties have been demolished. I think there's one last lingering buyout prop- property for Princeville, I think it was Princeville. It was one property that, um, uh, air property is tied up in probate, I believe. Uh, so they've been given a deadline. There's some things that they had to do, a thirty-day deadline to start a problem. So we do have one last, uh, possible purchase in the town's buyout program. Other than that, all the other ones who wanted to participate have participated, and those homes have already been demolished from the last.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Hmm, let me think.
Why are you thinking?
All right, thank you.
Um, any questions from another commissioner? Here in none, just a mission report, and begging for any questions. Well, here's, uh, just to let you know, um, what I'm doing in terms of, um, the meetings, um, I rotate the in and out. Uh, decided that Robin, aye, and I would be at all of them with officers. And we rotate two in and out. If for some reason, uh, we, uh, you all think that we shouldn't contact my segments or me, and we would ask another, um, and I would want for our recess meeting, our school board meeting, I would, then Ms. Power and Mr. Webb would be at that meeting, said, okay. And that meeting, then Ms. Harris, whatever, next meeting, you and one of the other commissioners that are here now would be at that meeting, made of this. If, if there's some differences, or, or you call me, or you think I need to do something otherwise, let me know. And I don't, or if, if for some reason you think you ought to be at that meeting, you need to talk to another commissioner, because there's something that of importance to do as individuals, that you need to be present to talk about. I have, if you know, if I need to say, for some of you, or for some of you, I don't, madam, you think you need a presence in the chamber, because I think, uh, I have asked Mr., I mean, do we have the technology even for the school board meeting to, what was that term, this? Or to the other rooms, for all of us to be closer to that meeting, but I think it's important for us to try to give that to as normal as we can and still respect them in the delicate way.
I've talked to Chris Evans a couple of times about this, because we have requested that rescue squad change the form of boards. I mean, we need to find somebody to serve a board, because we've asked for it to be the expert, so everybody needs to be thinking about that. And along those lines, I think I brought this up before, and I don't know, we need to ask Mr. Peter. Is it proper for the county commission to set requirement for any, it doesn't tang to the rescue squad, it contains any other board we collect somebody to, or, or okay, somebody to. Is it possible that we could set a?
I didn't hear part of that.
Yes, sir.
I didn't either.
There's something we can do with the board, because we have so many boards that people serve them, and then they don't show it. And I don't think people on the board should not show it.
I, I think, uh, Ms. Paulson is speaking in terms of can we, can we refine attendance?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think if we do the bylaws, we put that in the bylaws. If they are our boards anyway.
Right.
If they are our boards, we can change, uh, and I think, uh, you know, if you list three of seven, we can, uh, uh, is there something you think we ought to look at?
Well, I think we should look at it, and I think we should have minimum standards, and, and, but be it three or how many in a row, but I think anybody should pick or fifty percent of the beat through here. That's why we pick the beat about a year, most of them. Unless it's more.
And some.
I agree with that.
Uh, uh, and, and I think we would have a planning board to do that. Come back to us in terms of attendance, I think. That, that's actually to look at our, those boards that we appoint. And see, you know, we have, uh, attendance ser- uh, we have, uh, attendance requirement. And, and let's look at how, and, uh, I don't, I wouldn't have an opposition to that, do I here? Any opposition to that, but any of our boards?
No, I think it need to be on all our boards too.
Now, some of these boards that you appoint, appoint to.
We do a two minute.
Right, they, they are independent boards, and it will be up to them to make changes to their own bylaws. However, many of them probably already have some provision like that.
But I think that we can still request that our appointee.
That absolutely.
Uh, we want them, we want resignations or something. We, we are talking about the people that we stand.
That's.
We want them present to represent us. I think that we could deal with some language on, on, on that appointment, okay?
And we have to think about it, some boards only need, I, I don't know, you know, there are different situations, but all of them should have some minimum standards before, yeah.
And, and, and what we can ask the board, if our board members miss their fleet, give their attendance record. We want their attendance record about, of everybody here.
Paulson.
Charlie?
Yes.
Anything else we brought before this meeting? Here in none, is there motion to recess this meeting on the third of May, so two thousand twenty-six PM, or joint meet of the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners and Edgecombe County Board of Education? Where would it be?
It will be at their, uh, the main office, central office on North Main.
Is there motion?
I'm moving, second, Paulson.
Motion, that's second. All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign, aye. Robin, aye?
Wayne, aye, aye.
Wood, aye.
Paulson, aye.
Wiggins, aye? Ms. Harris?
Paula, aye.
Paul? Mr. Todd? Mr. Webb?
Yes, sir. Ralph Will, aye.
Seems like we have enough ayes, uh, down the jury. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everybody.
Goodbye.